Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our town meeting information session. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tony Zupala, I'm the town manager here in Norwood. We are going to go through the items on the warrant for our special town meeting. We have a number of department heads here as subject matter experts for certain questions and then CPA has an article and we have members from the CPA committee here to answer questions on that article as well. As we go through, this is a great time to ask questions. We tend to focus these information sessions on asking questions more than giving your opinion. That certainly we recommend you save for town meeting. But feel free to ask any questions you have. We'll go through each of the articles. At the end, if we didn't get a chance to get to your question, we will circle back and at the end you can ask questions on any of the articles that you want. If we are getting a lot of questions on individual articles, we might pause, get through the rest of the articles and then go back to the ones folks have questions on because that is what we're here, uh, here to do. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and get started. The first, um, town meeting is next week, don't forget. We are on a Thursday as our first date, which is a little unusual. We usually start on a Monday, but sometimes based on, uh, schedules and holidays, we end up having to start on a Thursday for a special. So with that, we're going to kick right into it. Article number one, I'll give folks second to get their papers shuffled. And incidentally, we do have copies of the presentation, the warrant, the yellow sheets up here, if anyone would like physical copies. So Article One would be an appropriation out of free cash for body worn cameras, body worn cameras, uh, that would be utilized by the police department have more and more become the norm. In Massachusetts as well as elsewhere in the country, we have been moving steadily towards it. I don't want to say slowly, I don't say too quickly. They are very costly. We were waiting, uh, until we were able to get grant funding to offset a significant portion of the cost because as you can tell with the total cost, even though the requested appropriation is a hundred eighty thousand dollars, that's with a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from the state. So that will implement them, we'll be able to operate them for about five years on that and then we'll have to look at whether there's additional equipment costs or replacement costs after that. There's a lot of backend costs to the police cameras. It's not just a camera and the training and everything else that goes along with it, but it's all that data being stored, quite complicated. Some towns that jumped into this five, seven, eight years ago, we're spending a million dollars or more for smaller departments. So we feel it's the right time for us to move into this and candidly, we want to take advantage of the fact that we can get the state to pay for more than half of it. Questions on body worn cameras? Is that a question or just somebody joining?
I think that was just somebody joining.
Okay. So Article Two would be an appropriation into the stabilization fund. So the stabilization fund is our general purpose stabilization fund, our general purpose savings fund, if you will, our rainy day fund. Sometimes as it's referred to, uh, organize, uh, rating agencies always want to see your stabilization fund growing. Several years ago when we sold the Ford sale property, the discussion at the time in the committee that was made to town meeting was that we would transfer four million dollars of that sale into stabilization funds, two million dollars into, uh, our override stabilization, which we did last year, two million dollars into the regular stabilization fund, if you will, which we are doing this year. There is a bit of a workaround, we have to do it. It's actually two million dollars of free cash going into stabilization. And instead, we're going to use two million dollars to offset some capital expenses, but that's just the way the state has this workaround, uh, the sale of, um, property proceeds, what we're able to do. So this will be two million dollars going to the general stabilization fund. We can cycle back these if anyone has questions at the end. Article Three would be a one million dollar appropriation into the compensated absences fund. Last year at town meeting, the town established a compensated absences fund, which is what pays for, uh, vacation and sick time at somebody's separation. And, uh, previously it would either come out of the school budget on the school side or on the town side. Somebody will remember, we'd have to go to town meeting in May and move eighteen hundred dollars from the clerk's office and fifteen hundred dollars from the, uh, DPW and two thousand dollars from the fire department to pay vacation upon separation, which is legally required in Massachusetts. The town established a fund and began a budget line. The goal would be to eventually take this liability and have enough cash to offset the liability. Again, helps with our credit rating. It helps with rating, uh, rating agencies, which impacts our borrowing. We are double A plus. We want to stay double A plus. We would certainly like to be triple A, but at the end of the day, we still have to show progress and even maintain the credit rating where we are. So, uh, given that the number free, the free cash number is high this year, it was felt appropriate that we should do an additional million dollar deposit into the fund. The way it works is that the, we have a budget line for compensated absences, town and school, and now that the schools have joined in on this. When that budget line gets exceeded every year because it doesn't match the amount, money gets drawn down out of the fund. When that budget line is, uh, underspent, that money gets deposited into the fund. It's the same way that we handle workers comp and unemployment, although those are on a much smaller scale than the total liability, uh, that we have here. So million dollars deposit into the compensated absences fund. Questions? Madam Moderator?
Um, how much free cash do we have?
The total amount came in at twenty nine million dollars, which is a record high for us. It will not be seen again. I know I said that last year, but this year it really won't, unless I'm wrong, which I hope I am. And we get another half a billion dollar project in town this fiscal year. So I hope I'm wrong, but not on the horizon. Question over here?
What, what's the yearly average for, uh, spend on the compensated absences?
Just four and a quarter, four hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. On average, yep.
And our total liabilities are four point one million, based on our financial report.
But we'd love to get close to that. We don't necessarily realistically need to get all the way there. Um, that liability would only actually make its way, um, into reality if every single town employee quit all of a sudden at once, which I can tell you, not having enough money in the bank for that would not be my first concern if that happened. Uh, but the rating agencies want to show that you're addressing it and are you seventy five percent there, are you eighty percent of the way there? And that budget line that we have, the goal is to slowly increase that over time to get to that average and then we will have solved this problem forever in our financial statements and we'll never have to go back and worry about it again. That's the goal. All right. Article Four starts our capital plan. Some of these will go quickly as I go project by project. Again, just feel free to already hand up and raise, uh, ask a question if you have one. And again, we will cycle back if you have one. Uh, first item up on the capital plan is the, uh, to finalize the replacement of the wildlife fence at the airport. Believe it or not, deer strikes, uh, deer's hit planes. I know we like to think of driving down the road and got committed deer hit your car, deers will hit planes. This is replacing a twenty year old fence along the length of the airport. This is, uh, a follow up to a project appropriated last year. The total cost of this project to us is about a hundred eighty thousand dollars and that's five percent of the project. The FAA is paying the remaining, uh, ninety five percent of that project. So just replacing, I think the estimate market's a mile, one of my offense, right? Market implemented here. So there he is, more than a mile of fence, right? Yeah. So it's significant wildlife.
It's about three, three and a half.
Unfortunately, a lot of fence. To pick up trucks for the facilities department, we fund a lot of our regular vehicles out of the, uh, the capital operating budget that we have every year in May. We have not done that yet with facilities. We are looking to at some point do that with facilities. But this would fund replacement of two vehicles in the facilities department. They maintain about fifteen vehicles in their fleet. We try to replace these vehicles, uh, for a pickup truck every seven to ten years, depending on its use. Some of the facilities trucks can go a little bit longer, but once they start becoming unreliable, it delays our response for, uh, the facilities department. Question? Yep.
So the budget book that was published in May?
Yep.
Described expenditures of about a hundred sixty million dollars.
Yep.
Any of this included in that?
None of this is, no. This is all separate. That's why it's coming in the November town meeting.
So our expenditures more realistically a hundred and seventy four million.
If you want to include capital, yes. We used to do capital at town meeting in May. Um, but capital is not funded out of the operating budget. So again, that budget might be a hundred and sixty million dollars and then there's additional appropriations outside of the operating budget, capital or other projects that we have.
So where do you show balancing the budget?
So in that budget document, that is our operating budget that you'll get in May and our operating expenses and revenues are there. That's where the balanced budget is. That's what we need to operate. I don't want to say we don't need to do any capital, but in theory, capital is a separate decision every year based on whether or not we have the funding to actually do it. Some towns have enough money built in their budget to cover all their capital needs and it's just a discussion. We certainly do not and probably will never actually get there.
But say the fire truck, one point three million dollars, that's being requested.
Yes.
If, if, if it's not shown in the budget in May, that money's going to come out somewhere.
Correct.
Where does it come from?
Out of free cash surplus revenue.
Borrowing.
Or borrow, yeah, at the end point, we were borrowing money. Is there a question online? Go ahead, Jerry.
I was wondering why we have to spend over eighty thousand dollars for pickup truck?
Uh, if you bought a fully equipped pickup truck lately, that's what you're likely looking at for the cost.
Um, actually I did look at those cars pretty recently. I don't think it's eighty thousand dollars. I mean, it could be, you know, forty to fifty maybe. But, um, unless there's some really unique feature here, I'm not seeing eighty thousand dollars.
So i- if you want, Jerry, come by the office, we'll go through the state bid list and show you what the state goes out competitively for contracts. We have to go out to bid for all the equipment that we get. This is the, this is the price for replacing a, uh, a work pickup truck. Now that's all in. We don't just go for the base truck. This includes, for instance, if it's the electrician's truck, there's some equipment that goes along with the electrician's truck. They have to get, um, lights installed in the truck as well.
All right, I'll do that.
All right. Other questions on facility vehicles? Parking lot at the Savage Center. We have been systematically going over the last few years, uh, through all of our different parking lots and replacing our parking lots. We've done some of the downtown lots. We've done a couple of school lots up this year, two projects, one being the parking lot at the Savage Center, which you can see, um, is quite old and is probably more patched than lot. Um, was deferred from last year. We were looking at the capital plan last year and sometimes things get jumbled based on the amount of money that everyone feels comfortable spending in one given year. And while the parking lots do need to get done, some of these haven't been done since they were originally installed. Um, they're generally a project you could move around if you had to. At this point, if you use the Savage lot, you know, it's really barely functioning lot. One of the benefits of redoing it, we'll be able to have, um, probably burn around the center as opposed to right now, everything just kind of runs off and runs around. When you see those giant little sand tiles in a parking lot, that's an indication that there's a problem with drainage in the parking lot, that water is just pooling in random places. That water freezes in winter too, which can create an issue. This particular site, we did the senior center half of the building. It's probably more closer to a third of a lot. Uh, four years ago, I think that portion of lot was worse. So we kind of bifurcated it, did that portion. Now we're completing the rest of the Savage Center. The apparatus floor, uh, construction or reconstruction for the public safety building. So the apparatus floor is right in the main fire bay. That is where all offices and fire trucks sit in the bay. It's not just a, it sounds strange when I say it's not just a floor, but there's a complicated system under it that treats any runoff or any chemicals that come from the equipment and it's rated to hold the weight of our equipment. So when you think of all of our engines and ambulances sitting right there on that bay, the, um, structure underneath the floor occasionally is going to need work. The fire station is getting twenty years old. Um, new fire stations, uh, full size are forty, fifty, sixty million dollar projects. So our twenty year old brand new fire station is going to be with us for a while. So now's the time to start to make some of these facility improvements to make sure that we can, uh, continue to have the fire station for the foreseeable future. Any apparatus floor?
Uh, yes, we have one.
Doris Low. Go ahead, Doris.
Hi, um, I, if I'm not mistaken, I thought that this apparatus floor was already voted on at an, uh, I, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but I specifically remember this because it was kind of a unique story of how it worked. And is this addition to what we already voted on for extra work or is this for the floor itself?
Nope, that's a great question. What we voted on last year was the engineering and design money to look at the floor and to have a firm come in and do some test borings, some drilling, drillings and some lidar to look at the floor and see what needed to get done. This is the actual work. We try to do our, our study or our design and then follow up the following year with the work.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely. In the past, we would sometimes try to just get a project done in one shot and say, well, let's get the engineering, the design done and we think it's a half million dollars, we think it's eight hundred thousand dollars. We're not sure. We moved away from that because really we should be doing, design bid build is really the process in, um, most public agencies and a lot of private agencies where we need to know what we're getting into. I like to describe us as, you know, probably a solidly middle class town, but we don't know that we're always going to have money available. And the size and scope of a project changing is going to rearrange other projects for us. So this apparatus floor was an example of maybe it only needs sixty thousand dollars worth of work. Maybe it needs a half million dollars. Maybe somebody comes in and tells us that there's a problem with the foundation of the building and by the time we're done with this, it's two million dollars. Well, if this was a two million dollar project, we were going to be rearranging other projects in the plan. We don't quite have the money to always just say, hey, let's just get the project done and throw extra money on and call it a day. So we have to try to be strategic about knowing what we're getting into rather than having to kick something else out of the plan that might end up having, uh, a higher priority. Next is a new fire engine. We did make an adjustment. Uh, I should say a replacement of a fire engine. It is a new truck. We're not adding to the fleet. We're replacing a vehicle. We did make a swap in the plan from an ambulance to an engine. Part of the reason for that is we got two ambulances in just last year. They were close to a year later than one of them. Um, at one point we were upon this promised floor models in April of last year, uh, or April of the prior year that showed up November, December. Uh, the lead time on a fire engine is about eighteen months now. The lead time on a ladder truck is about three years. So we may be coming back to town meeting at some point in the next year saying, we've got to look at what we need in the next five to seven years and figure out how to get an appropriation now because if we need to replace this vehicle next year, we're eighteen months away from that, uh, appropriation. So given how long it's been taking, we swapped the engine and the ambulance. Uh, engines are always built sort of custom. Uh, the replacement will follow the two engines we've bought in the last six or seven years and it's almost the exact same model. Prior to that, we sort of picked whatever we were looking at in a given year that looked good, but we have been standardizing the fleet of engines. So it'll take us another five or six years, but then we will have a ladder truck and, uh, three to four engines that are roughly the same model, which is great for training, stability, parts ordering and, um, just general, uh, use. Henry, question?
Yeah, is there a trade in on these?
You sometimes get something for it. Oftentimes if you can get scrap for it, you'll be happy that you can get that. The problem is the market for used fire engines is usually volunteer and rural departments in the middle of nowhere. Apparently some many years ago, I don't know who in the world would remember, um, we apparently gave an, uh, an engine to Argentina and somehow it got shipped out. What's that?
It was a ladder truck.
It was our ladder truck. So I don't think we made any money off that. I can only imagine what shipping a ladder truck to Argentina is, but it's minimal. If you can get scrap for them, you're happy. Sometimes a rural or a volunteer department will pay something for it. But if you're running it as hard as we run them and you're getting a truck to the end of its life cycle, the problem is you could look at twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollar repairs. I think, um, Chief, the ladder just had the, um, not the alternator, but the, um,
Transmission.
Transmission, what it came at twenty three?
Twenty one thousand.
Twenty one thousand dollars to replace the transmission. So you can inside a year see a hundred thousand dollars with the repairs on a, uh, a large engine.
Uh, Alan?
Uh, just, just quickly, Tony, on engines, don't, uh, rather than, you know, trade them in or get rid of them, don't you sometimes keep them in reserve in case one of your regular units goes down? We should have something.
Sure, we always, we always keep a reserve. I mean, if we've got a good offer on, you know, our reserves, we're in good shape. That would be, um, that would be one thing. We always have to keep a backup. The region, I don't want to say the region shares a, a backup ladder truck. We borrow while pulls ladder truck, which is what a lot of, um, area towns do. So we, equipment is shared as much as possible, but even then your backup engine, if you're not cycling it through, um, you've got to bring it back up and then it breaks down and it just never, never plays it. And unfortunately, fire engines generally need to work when we need them to work. A question to back?
Tony, just to clarify, the one point three million is a fully loaded vehicle. It's not, it, we won't be facing additional expenses to load the equipment.
Correct. That is all in. Several years ago, we moved in and making sure our capital purchases were all in purchases. What some towns will do is they'll, uh, you know, to Mr. Hot Cross's point, they'll say, I just need forty five grand for the truck. That's all we need. And then they're robbing their operating budget to equip it or they come back, they ask for a reserve fund transfer. We may have done that years ago. We have stopped that. That's everything for the truck. A fire engine probably has a hundred thousand dollars plus worth of equipment on it. We make sure we include that all with the purchase. So this is the all in price. Now certainly once we go to bid and we get quotes, could that price change? That's always, uh, a possibility for any project. But we spec out all of the equipment we need. Do the same thing with our police cruisers. We don't just buy the bare minimum model and then search around looking for money. If we know that the real cost of that cruiser is seventy thousand dollars because of all the junk that's in it, we're, that's what we're getting for the cruiser. We're doing the same thing with the engine. We do the same thing with our ambulances. So we're not again buying an ambulance for four hundred grand and then getting the structure after that and then getting this piece of equipment after that and then getting something else and all this other stuff. So it's the all in cost. All right, year five of our road repair project. We began a project five years ago to get all of our roads up to, uh, what a road rating condition index of, um, or PCI of which is wherever we want to be. This is the fifth year of that project. Uh, two point eight million dollars. This will get our roads up to where we want to be. We're going to have to maintain that. So this is not the last road project you're ever going to see, but we've spent five years catching up and I think you can see the benefit of that in the roads in town. This gets us to a point where we're in a good place. So it's one more hectic year of construction in town and then it'll slow down a little, little bit. Um, but then we've got to make sure we're committed to maintaining our roads in good condition. Uh, questions on year five of the road with Mr. Donnelly?
You just might want to explain to me that town meeting, that two point eight million dollars is going to be in two motions, correct?
That is correct. It will be two million dollars coming out of the Forbes proceeds. That's how we're just able to use the Forbes money to pay for capital and then free cash that we would otherwise use for capital goes into the stabilization account. Sounds like we're just shifting money around, but the state has told us we have to do it this way if we want to achieve that. The other eight hundred thousand dollars will be from free cash. We started this plan, uh, this program deciding that we were going to borrow each year for the increments. Last year that when we realized we had a good free cash number, we said for roads, better to pay cash for, um, and we did that last year. We're able to do that this year. There won't be a year six of the program. I know that the board of selectmen has indicated they want to look at sidewalks. This program, sometimes you see a road done and not the sidewalk. Part of the reason is this program and this expenditure were designed around roads. It was getting our roads into a certain condition. That's where we need to be and that's where we need to go. Sidewalks are important. They are very expensive. I think Prospect Street, if we were to do the sidewalks all down Prospect Street, Mark, the estimate was just under a million bucks. So i- if we look at this plus money we get from the state and a small allocation in the budget, that would be, um, in a normal year, that would be two thirds of our road. What we're going to likely do going forward between money we get from the state and the small amount of money in our budget, make sure we're trying to increase and not decrease that amount from the budget every year. And then every five to seven years, we're probably going to have to have a capital project for one of the longer roads in town. So Washington Street, the whole corridor probably realistically needs to get done every ten years. Whereas a well maintained sort of subdivision street can go thirty years without needing to get done. Washington Street gets beat up. It's heavily trafficked. There's a lot of cars that go on it. The asset up a lot. The problem is if we do that whole corridor and we just take it out of our budget, you're probably tying up two or three, if not four years of all of our road money. So that's four years that we can't do any other roads in town. And then if you pick two or three of the busiest, uh, roads in town, what you're looking at a fifteen or twenty year period is we're only getting roads done every third year, maybe every fourth year. Um, Washington Street's several years out, so we won't have to worry about traffic for a little bit, but we're going to have to decide how to handle some of those larger road projects that would otherwise eat up three, four or five years of our road. Questions on the year five of the road repair program? Washington Street at Hawes Brook Bridge rehabilitation. This project was actually kicked from last year to this year, given the amount of construction that's going on in the area. Uh, this is the bridge right across from Hawes Pool, right in front of, uh, Brookside or right, um, right adjacent to Brookside. It is, um, in need of serious repair. We've been good about getting, uh, our bridges taken care of. It's an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar free cash, uh, appropriation. The pictures don't really show justice, but if you look at the, uh, just because of the lighting, you can see the bridge is starting to fade. It's not a complete replacement uh, of the bridge. It was kicked last year because between the middle school and Hawes Pool, there's just a lot going on right down there. By getting this appropriation now, by the time it goes through design and, uh, public line and bidding and everything else, we're not looking at construction until next year anyway. Which is why sometimes we get a project approved in October, November and everyone's like, well, great, when are you starting the bridge? It's a ways out and it takes some time for it to happen, but we didn't want, at least Hawes Pool to be, uh, finished before we also started the bridge. Is that a question online?
Ed Ferris.
Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Tony. Um, in the scope of this project, is there anything there for, uh, raising the height of the bridge?
Uh, raising the height of bridge?
Because down in that area, there's, you know, high water table with heavy water drainage.
You know, high water table with heavy water drainage.
Yeah, I don't think the Hawes Brook, it's not being raised at all. No.
I don't know. I think it's probably worth adding it to the scope, honestly.
Adding it to the scope, honestly.
I, yeah, but Ed, I don't know how you raise that bridge without fundamentally altering the whole road and talking about a, a, a sort of a mega project. I don't know that we've had flooding over that bridge in the last couple of years. Just in recent memory, but Mark, do you?
It's not an impediment to the Hawes Brook flow. It does not have to be raised.
Okay. All right. Other questions on the Hawes Brook Bridge? Next is a sewer project and a sewer, oh, is that a question? Alex, go ahead.
I, I can just add that the conservation commission did permit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alex, we can't, we can't.
I just wanted to add that the conservation commission did permit the Washington Street bridge and it was treated in compliance with the standard to make sure that it was able to convey flow, um, as effectively as, as possible, um, given, given any constraints in the area. Given, given any constraints in the area.
Great, thank you. Uh, sewer INI project, INI's inflow and infiltration. This would be a mapping of our sewer system. Uh, seventy five percent paid for by the MWRA. So what that is, is a relatively, a little camera goes through and looks at our entire sewer system and sees what is getting into the sewer system that shouldn't be getting into the sewer system. Now, what might that be? Roots and other, um, biological growth, tens of damaged sewer pipes and water gets in and, um, it's mainly water sediment can get in and cause clogs and breaks and stuff that can happen as well. But where water flows into a sewer pipe, we pay for every gallon of water we purchase and we pay for every gallon of sewer we flush. So I always try to tell people it's a little bit more complicated than this, but picture a big meter as the enter the town and a big meter as it goes out of the town and we're paying for it. Now, somebody dumping, mind you, the storm drain is your storm sewer. That's not your sanitary sewer. A little bit of water getting in is not a big deal, but if you have a area that's fairly wet and there's a sewer pipe that runs under it and there's a crack in it, you're talking about thousands and thousands of gallons that can leak into the sewer system. And we end up having to pay for that treatment. So we will end up cameraing the whole system and from there we'll be able to know where we're seeing significant inflow and infiltration and identify repairs that need to be made. Maybe largely comprehensive in some areas, it may be as small as, hey, we've seen some trickling and we've seen some waterfalling in this area. We have to go ahead and fix it and stop some flow. I think, Mark, we did the airport, um, a couple of years ago, uh, the pipe there, that was leaking, we figured it was a couple of million gallons a year, right?
Oh, yeah. During, you know, the springtime and the water table came off.
So we're likely, once we have that list, look at the major property, uh, major problem areas and work, work our way down from there. A small crack where a little water is dripping in on a small residential street is not likely to be a problem versus, hey, we've got uh, either an illegal connection or we've got a huge amount of water flowing in from damage to the system some.
I'm just curious, where does the camera access the sewer?
Pop off the sewer cap, they put the little thing in and it drives through.
I thought that was storm drain actually under the, where are the, where are the sewer caps?
There's still sewer caps in the road. Um, the, the, the thing, if you will, the grate on your side of the road, that's storm water, but the sewer system itself has access points at every street or roughly every street. Mark, once, have we done a comprehensive INI recently?
Well, we've done a lot of lining of sewer pipes, uh, pollution control. Haven't done an INI study for a while, so it's, it's high on the do list. There's a lot of water, clean water going into the sewer system that we're paying for. So this project will identify that and rectify that.
And illegal connections to the sewer system are possible. They're not legal, but over time, things happen. People have connected a storm drain into the sanitary sewer and things do happen. Yeah.
Yeah, I, uh, put a, uh, irrigation system in, uh, fall and I just got my bill which, you know, but it was mainly the sewer.
So did you get a second meter or separate meter?
I don't think so.
So if you have an irrigation system, you can get a separate meter where we won't charge the sewer on that portion of it because we know it's not going into the sewer. But then your, your regular bill does get an adjustment. Because the way we build sewer, we don't really meter the sewer flow. It's estimated at a percentage of the water flow.
Yeah, it's mostly sewer.
But, um, we can, if you let us know, we can run the analysis. Some people look at it and it just doesn't make sense. Um, financially it may not make sense. For some people it does and that's why they do it. Um, but for some people it doesn't, just doesn't work out. It's, you know, this bill goes down fifty dollars and this one goes up fifty dollars. You're really saving anything, but we can help you do the analysis. Other questions on INI? Right. Traffic study for Washington and My Lodge. This intersection has not had a comprehensive traffic study done in, uh, probably ever, if not many years. For us to make any changes to a traffic pattern, if we were going to add something like a light, we were required to do a third party traffic study. Otherwise the MASTOC does not let us do, um, significant changes or modifications to an intersection in town. So this is a third party study. They'll look at the peak traffic period, which will actually be when the middle school opens. They'll look at some off peak periods prior to that to get an idea of the delta. But I, if we're doing anything to this intersection, we have to study before MASTOC will allow us to, um, put light in. Now that we're going to, we have to do the traffic study, get the counts and see what's needed. Also same thing, if there was a, to be a redesign of the intersection, I don't think it would be substantial. MASTOC requires a study for going to do anything regarding this intersection. Um, the traffic flow in that end of town has increased. As you know, you're kind of coming in from Walpole. Walpole is growing. There's a lot more growth in Walpole. Uh, we know from our own traffic counts, it's increasing. All the growth in that area, that part of town, it's increasing. So this is just a look at uh, My Lodge Street. And again, if we were to, um, just sort of do it on our own and we think a light is warranted, not saying that it is, MASTOC requires us to be able to make any major traffic modifications.
How long does the study last?
Uh, by last, you mean like how long is it good for?
So how long does it take them to do the study?
Mark, once they start, a couple of months?
Yeah. Toss. It's a hundred thousand dollars. I'm wondering which pay and talk.
Yeah, so i- it's a couple of months worth of traffic studies and then analysis and they're doing, um, traffic counts. It has to be a third party study. We can't just throw a little clicker out there and tell the state, yeah, it's, it's. We can't just throw a little clicker out there and tell the state, yeah, it's it's 70,000 a day. Let us, you know, let us put a traffic light up there. Uh question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Rachel?
Uh, thank you. Um you, I think, answered part of my question. I was thinking about all of this. The traffic study is gonna happen after the new middle school is open? And the Haun-
Sorry, go ahead. Uh when we do a, generally when you do a traffic study, you need to know what your peak volume is. And your peak volume is gonna be um in the fall when the middle school is open. That's when traffic's likely gonna be its highest throughout those days. Whereas in the summer, we know um not only summer never a peak period, at least for us, I'm sure it is down the cape or down the vineyard or something like that. Um you're gonna want to know the difference, but you know what the traffic is at its busiest and that's gonna be when we have a school up and running in session with an additional grade um as well as sort of the regular uh ebb and flow of um uh the workday.
And then in addition to um traffic volume, is it gonna also look at kind of traffic flow and layout? I I'm on this intersection multiple times a day. Every day I live on Mylod Street. Um and I have always found it very difficult if you're pulling left um onto Washington from Mylod to go into town. Um if anything high than the sedan um is parked on kind of the Walpole back side, it's impossible to see traffic. Is that gonna be an increase?
Absolutely. It's not just traffic counts and I'm sorry if I made it think that it was just uh the number of traffic counts. They'll look at the traffic flow and so they'll say, all right, on average, there's 27 people an hour turning left. What can be done about that? Is it a problem? Is it not a problem? What can be done to improve sightlines? Do you add a lane? Do you cut a lane? Do you add a left turn only lane? They go through all the different analyses to see what the problem is and what could be done to make it um make it better if needed.
Thank you.
Okay, uh let me go one person in room and then I'll jump online.
I was just gonna ask, do they tell you the difference between traffic with cars and trucks? Because it seems to be a huge, I live on that side. There's a huge increase in big truck traffic all around that area.
Uh you know, they don't generally, but um I it would factor into the overall traffic count. We could do our own study to try to look at what's truck traffic, but you realistically can't restrict truck traffic as difficult as it is, as much of a pain in the butt as it is.
This is one of the reasons why maybe your bridges and stuff aren't lasting as long because you've got, I've lived there for 40 years. And the truck traffic is tremendous now compared to what it was even 10 years ago.
Sure. That being said, uh what was, what year was the Hawes Brook Bridge in? Mark?
Was it constructed?
Yeah. Thirty?
No, I think it was the 50s.
50, so we're getting 70 years out of our bridge. That's, that's pretty good, pretty good. Um but it's, that part of town is a lot busier than it used to be. There's a lot more traffic, so we have to look at it. Uh there were two questions online. Okay, Ed and then Frank.
Hey Tony, thanks. Um I have to ask this. Is the study gonna look at this? And if they find a need, just default automatically to a traffic signal? So the reason I asked this is, the reason I asked this is because, you know, we're putting the traffic signal up on Upland right now um next to the bridge and traffic signals are not very efficient when it comes to traffic in general.
Yeah, it's not gonna default to a traffic signal. I'm not a um, I'm not a transportation engineer, but there might, I, they might be a light on Mylod Street if that's where the problem is with traffic, that it would be tied to coming out of Mylod Street, but that's just my speculation, looking at the uh, at the outset. Remember, a- any intersection design or any traffic signalization design is always designed to flow the most cars through the most important route. So we have this problem with Manhattan Street where some folks can't get down Lennox Street and they complain about it. They say, hey, I don't have a lot of time. Well, Lennox Street might be 2,000 cars a day and Manhattan is 20. So it's designed to make sure that the maximum amount of traffic is flowing. You might actually find, and I know Rachel may not want to hear this, but the people turning from Mylod Street might actually be causing more traffic and it may make sense to stack them up and let it go at once. That's just speculation. Can't say that.
So you need to look at the town of Amherst.
Yep.
That I've been out and, you know, participating at for the past 12 years. Every intersection that they have, they have defaulted to a mini rotary as opposed to a traffic light. For the simple reason that you don't have to worry about a traffic light regulating flow because flow is regulated naturally within the rotary itself. And there's no extra cost. It's significantly less expensive.
So that, that's, I, I agree that traffic rotaries are great. We are putting one at the end of Prospect Street um after, for years. I don't know what you would call it, Mark, a half. It wasn't really a rotary. It was just a complicated um
So, so
sort of half stop.
MassDOT is gonna want you to look at a roundabout or a rotary.
Right. I don't know that one was.
You're not gonna have the area there to make it, but they want you to look at it first.
Yeah.
You have the area they want you to.
Actually, Mark, I would disagree with that. I suggest you look at what Amherst has done. When I say micro rotary, I mean micro rotary. It would fit perfectly within the intersection of these two streets.
That part of the state has rotaries and they'll, they'll, they will absolutely look at it as part of it. I think what Mark's concern is.
That town has twice our population and double our amount of vehicle traffic.
I don't know that that's accurate, Ed, not to get into a debate over Amherst. Their population is between 30 and 35,000 and there's about 40,000 kids at the university. Our census population is 31,000, but our daytime population is between 60 and 70,000. We're also only on 10 square miles, so our traffic makeup is gonna be fundamentally different. I've lived in Amherst.
60,000 people went in session and they have 40,000 cars on campus. And you include that with the town, they're coming up to about 85,000 people with close to 70,000 cars and trucks in motion every day.
Sure. I can tell you the Route 1 traffic count is about 50,000 cars a day and that's just Route 1. So certainly the study's gonna look at that option. I think Mark's concern is to make that happen even there. You would either be eliminating a park, wetlands, or taking a couple of homes. And in terms of the cost, if you have to take a home, that means we're taking your home. Value for it.
No, we're not talking about the same thing. I, I strongly recommend you look at what they've done. Because the rotaries fit within single and double lane. Most of them are single. You know, which is what you're looking at here. You're looking at way traffic, lane each way. So.
Again, that's the, that's why we have to do a study because DOT makes you review all of those options. I think next was Frank.
Hi Tony, I'm a little bit off on point here, but pardon my ignorance. As someone who lives close to the intersection of Dean and Napontet, um what is the procedure for determining what warrants a traffic study?
So it, it's um, it's complicated as to what warrants it. Dean and Napontet, Mark, we've looked at that a couple of times before, correct?
We have.
Yeah, and and it's the, the traffic counts that we've done in the previous studies that have never warranted any action. So I don't think Mylod Street has been looked at in a couple of decades and there's a lot of growth going on in the area and a lot of change going on in that particular area. If we were to look at Dean and Napontet again, um every time we look at it, it just comes back with, there's nothing that DOT would let us actually change.
All right, thanks.
Absolutely. Not off topic. Great, great question. Uh Joe Greeley?
Thank you. Um one of the very informal observation is that since the bridge is down at Moss and Short, that there is definitely a lot more in that. It might be some other people's observations. The truck traffic especially has been, has increased because there's no pipe restriction anymore. So it's, you know, that's, that's a green light for the trucks. So if we do.
They're just not hitting it, but fair point.
Preferably not hitting it. But if we do a traffic study and that's kind of a, that's a hopefully a temporary situation, then we're gonna be counting more trucks and more vehicles because that road is not restricted. So.
It should. It, it will, truthfully, even if there's increased trust, truck traffic with the bridge being down and we've probably, some people hope the bridge stays down. Um I don't think you're gonna impact the overall traffic count. And as an example, I think Manhattan Street's traffic count is 17,000 per day. So how many trucks are going there? Now, if you told me that the traffic count, I don't know what it is from Mylod Street. I don't know if we've looked at or that intersection. If you were to tell me it's um 15,000 cars a day, or 2,000 trucks a day going down that street, I don't think that it's enough that it would necessarily impact it. Um maybe we don't need to do anything at all because without the bridge there, we're not having traffic hit that bridge and backing it up throughout four towns, but remains to be seen. But that's why you, you, we talk about a comprehensive traffic study. That's looking at all the factors, where it's coming, where it's going from, what the rate of traffic is, when it's high, when it's low, um to decide what would work and then you go through your different models of would this work, would that work? You know, we're not gonna be able to add lane, for instance, without, you know, something like that. Not that adding lanes ever actually addresses traffic, but as an example, that would likely quickly be ruled out as, well, you can't really widen the road. Other questions on the Washington Mylod traffic? Next up is a DPW vehicle replacement. Salt Truck number six, a 2009 vehicle, $330,000. We fund most of the DPW's regular vehicles through their operating budget. Those are just their trucks if they churn a few uh years to maintain a fleet and then the larger capital items come through capital outlay like a uh salt truck. Questions on the salt truck, salt and operations? Moving right along. Water improvement program, year five of 10. This is a program we began five years ago to start lining our water pipes. There are actually two appropriations. One is a zero interest loan. This is the fifth year of the program. What we effectively, what we essentially do is go in, we take a water pipe that your water flows through, the very water that you drink, and it either gets replaced entirely if it needs to, or more likely it's getting lined with a new concrete liner. So right here on the left, and I know the light's making it a little tough to see, but it's in the packet. This came from Walnut Street just earlier this year. So you could see all that sediment and buildup is uh with all tuberculation. That's what the water was flowing through on Walnut Street. This is what it looks like afterwards. Perfectly healthy to drink, but it creates a number of problems. One, it can impact the taste. Two, um it can impact the color. Three, it severely impacts fire flows and that's an important factor. We don't talk about it often. We talk about lining our water pipes. Imagine, Dr. Bay, there's a fire. The chief has to hook up to a hydrant. The water can flow through here or it can flow through here. So it's year five of a 10-year program. This is an example similar to the road project. We're given our financial realities. We tend to chunk projects up into pieces because it's a lot to try to take on everything all at once. There's a reality of how much construction we can handle at any given time. That factors into it, but we try to build in some pauses occasionally to make sure if something else comes up, we can make a um, make a course correction if necessary. Go ahead.
So the cleaning removes the sediment.
Correct.
But in the future, sediment can come back in.
No, that's what the lining does. So it's clean, clean and lined. Uh it's a concrete liner as opposed to um cast iron and the tuberculation won't build on the concrete.
So it breaks the bond between the metals that are in the water and the cast iron, so it hasn't tracked.
Other questions on the uh water lining, cleaning and lining? This is a follow-up. It's the same project. We just are able to get $630,000 every year from MWRA or the Mass Water Resources, Resource Authority, who provides us all of our water from the Quabon and who treats all of our sewer uh out of Deer Island. We're able to chunk off instead of having uh $5 million, we can do a little bit less and get a zero interest loan for 10 years from the MWRA. So I think we're probably approaching the 10th of these. We've done them for years where the net impact on the budget is actually pretty minimal as one falls off and then we just add another one with about a $5,000 differential. So it's all the same project and the same appropriation. We just need two separate motions because one of them is for the zero interest loan. That's the maximum the MWRA allows us to do. Believe me, if we could do the whole thing zero interest, we would do it in a heartbeat. But again, we decided to go with separate pitchers here just uh because we had the opportunity to. This came from Oak Road earlier uh today. And again, it's the same pitcher, I think, of uh what it's being replaced with, but this is what the water, for anyone who lived in Oak Road, was flowing through and the pitch on the right is what it'll look like, or what it looks like now, actually. The Savage Center and Ivets Tennis Courts, $800,000 for replacing both of these tennis courts. Um we did some resurfacing on one of them in 2015. Both of them are um quite old. If you've used them, they have reached the end of their life cycle. This was originally two separate projects. We decided to combine it into one project to get both of them done. Uh they'll physically get done at different times, but to make sure we can have one contractor, one series of materials and um, you know, make any decisions sort of comprehensively rather than doing one of them, waiting a year, doing the next one. Questions on the tennis courts? All right, school minibus replacement.
Uh Frank.
Uh Frank, go ahead.
Do I remember a couple of years ago, somebody mentioning that the tennis courts maybe weren't aligned properly with the sun or something?
That's actually at the high school where they're not, they're apparently not aligned correctly. So these, these, just at the Savage Center uh in the Coke League.
Okay.
Uh school replacement of five minivans. The school runs their own, we run our own special transportation, special education certification fleet. Uh these five minibus were purchased roughly all at the same time. Our preference would be to replace them over time and build that into a budget as we do with some of the other smaller vans. Unfortunately, this chunk was purchased as once and once you make, as uh sort of all at once, once you make that decision, you are sort of stuck going along with that decision. Otherwise, you'd be buying one this year or vehicles continue to um last well beyond their lifespan. So this likely won't need to come back for another 10 or 15 years. We at some point might be able to make that budgetary adjustment, but about five years before they need to be replaced is when you need to start replacing them. And then again, you're carrying a larger inventory for a short period of time. Uh question, Henry, go ahead.
What's the saving in those?
These ones, I think they're the 16? They're, we run the small, small vans that are literally not much weight on a sedan. These are a little bit bigger. These are your um your traditional short buses, I guess you'd say. Uh was there a question online or? No. No? All right. Moving on, uh these are just some of the capital items. Uh somebody mentioned earlier, I think Bob said that there are some items that you see in the operating budget um that are capital items. Um this is that list here uh as well as some things that come from grants. So we try to present everything together so everyone knows there are some items in the operating budget. They are capital, but we really treat them as rolling stock. The example I use is police cruisers. We have built into the budget the cost of replacement of police cruisers because we know we have to replace a certain number of police cruisers every year. An individual vehicle is not a significant expense and you could argue that an individual vehicle may not even really be a capital expense and you could argue that that's true except for we probably purchase a million dollars of vehicles a year excluding large equipment at the fire station. So our investment in our fleet is significant and some of that has to be regular recurring replacement. We tend to put uh vehicles that are larger or department that maybe doesn't have a regular replacement schedule. So the rec department, as an example, they have two vehicles. So we're not gonna build into the budget a vehicle for recreation because it's gonna be twice every 10 to 15 years that we replace a rec vehicle. Um but other vehicles, we uh, we try to replace our regular budget as we try to build into the operating budget costs we know we are going to have every year. All right, funding sources for the capital plan. You can see them up there. We're looking at uh $6 million of free cash, $2 million from the Forbes Estate and then the remainder is water uh water rates borrowing or will be a borrower and they get charged against the water rates. Questions on the capital plan financing piece? Yeah?
Um what is the capital level of the amount in uh free cash, the new amount? How do you gauge that in terms of?
So if you use $5 million, you probably would be very. Yes. So here's the challenge. This year, because we had some um, we had high interest earnings last year. Um significant amount. We did, how, how much did we do in interest? Seven million in interest. Five, six years ago, we did about $50,000 in interest. That's a combination of two things. That's the um, we borrowed for the middle school all at once, so we made some money off that candidly. Um it's not our charge, but we made some money off that in just general market rates where we're able to see a lot of money. That's coming down considerably. We also did a significant amount of building permits last year. We did $12 million in building permits just between FM Global and the hospital alone. We will not see that again. So last year, we had a record high number of either 12 or 14 million. This year, we're at 29 million. It will not be that next year. And again, I hope I'm wrong, but it won't be. Prior to that, our average year, four to $5 million. So we would probably be borrowing for some of these projects if we didn't have as large of a cash value that we have because you need to keep some of your cash on hand to be able to use. You can draw down your stabilization fund. Rating agencies don't like that and they especially don't like it if it's something that's not necessary. So we just wanna build an extra park next year. See, it's a really cool idea. Let's take $400,000 out of stabilization. That'll probably cost you more in interest when your credit rating goes down because that's a bad financial decision. I also want to caution when it comes to free cash, we're, we're fine this year. There's a good amount this year. How much we borrow versus what we pay cash is always gonna depend on where we are in our operating budget, how much cash we have. We also need to always keep some free cash and we are keeping plenty for snow and ice. Some of you who have been town meeting members for less than five years have probably never seen us actually have to fund snow and ice, but it's the one item you're allowed to deficit spend on in Massachusetts. Because candidly, in the, in the middle of February, we ran out of money. We can't stop following the roads. The money we have budgeted for snow and ice was adjusted at the last override based on an average expenditure minus the 2015 winter of five years prior to the override. And we have had some very warm winters. So I'm a little scared if we had a bad winter, what that snow and ice number would actually be because it's hard to track when it, it's hard to allocate resources and say, well, let's, let's go up $80,000. What did we spend last year? 600 grand. Well, we should go to 980 instead of 9. That doesn't work. Um so I don't know that we're gonna have a bad winter. We always need to keep some free cash until May to make sure uh we don't have snow and ice deficit to cover. We haven't in years, but that's actually kind of rare. It's the same thing in the facilities budget where we just have not had a really bad cold winter with a lot of breaks, with a lot of um heating issues. So I'm nervous what a bad winter would do to us, but we've had mild winters for five or six years.
Let me ask you.
Sure.
When does the uh yellow uh, yellow caution light or red, or red alarm go off with regards to free cash? Cause I have no, I have no idea. Because I have no, I have no idea whether $20 million in free cash is, is okay.
So again, I would say prior to the last two years, we averaged four to five million dollars a year. So if you're dropping below a million dollars, you should probably be getting nervous. But I want to caution you that deciding to spend a million dollars on an additional project is different than our million dollars for um, snow and ice. If we have two million dollars in free cash, we're going to do the bare minimum and spend the least amount of it. It doesn't mean you can spend a million dollars. I don't want you saying, hey, it's 29 million, we can spend 28 million. It's always about what are you actually spending it on? There's no absolute bottom level. If the economy collapses tomorrow and we have to throw everything into the budget, you're going to spend everything and throw everything into the budget. Avoiding a disaster is different than, you know, we want to do a nice project. I mean, the chairs in this room are in good shape. If somebody said, let's spend $50,000 doing them. Uh, out of our last $30,000 free cash ain't going to happen. So there's no bottom line number, but our historic average has been under $5 million total. Where we spend two to three, maybe four million. Call it going beyond 90% of what you have is not a good idea.
Okay, but based on what you just said, then the $20 million seems feeling comfortable.
Yes, thi- this year and this year alone.
You have to project for where we're going, right?
And you, sorry, go ahead.
Um, so, so it says our new free cash balance would be 20 million.
Correct.
What happens to that at the end of the fiscal year?
So any money, so it, it transfers to the next year. You don't lose it.
It does, yes.
Free cash, I always use the uh, expression, it dies on June 30th. And what that means is free cash is money that we didn't spend from a prior year. Or money above our projections that we took in. So we project we're going to do a million dollars building permits. We did two million dollars building permits. So on June 30th, your books are sort of wiped clean. And then there's a new calculation done of what you had left in money you didn't spend, and that's counted as money you didn't spend. As well as anything that was unexpended from the budget and revenue roll projection. Where I say it dies on June 30th and it's a new number. Generally what you leave in free cash is going to be there unless we had a bad year where we ended in the red. That usually doesn't happen, but if we had a revenue take a huge shortfall, that has to get made up somewhere. So that gets made up out of your surplus revenue. But we don't lose it and we don't have to spend it either. So we put some of it into this account, we put some into that account. You can leave $20 million there and do nothing with it. And then the next year you'll reasonably have $20 million unless you have a huge shortfall somewhere else.
And could some of that go into stabilization?
Uh, it is. We are actually transferring $2 million in stabilization.
Sorry, I'm talking about the two, the 20, 20 million that's left. Would we at some point move more of it into stabilization?
We could. It's not good to put money into stabilization if you think you're going to need it in the next year or two. Because the rating agencies look like that you've put money away and you're taking it. If you're going to spend it, just leave it in free cash and you have it available to be able to spend.
Alan?
Thanks, Tony. And the question uh, we just had about uh, putting additional money in stabilization. Uh, there is going to be a group which is uh, going to be getting together uh, from uh, the FINCOM, the select, I believe, the school committee as well as some town officials uh, to look at what's a reasonable number to put into a new stabilization account. Namely, a capital stabilization account. Because when you have a windfall like this. You know, the people, you know, again, the money prevents, it brings a hole in their pocket. We like to put some money away into a capital stabilization fund for different types of projects we have in the future, whether it's roofs, whether it's uh, you know, a land of tropical couple of years down the road, whether it's paid off a portion of town hall. And that has to be done several years down the road. So rest assured, we're going to look at it. I mean, I have no idea, you know, what the recommendation is, what the number will be. But I feel reasonably confident that when we come to spring town meeting, there'll be an article there to put an additional amount of money into most likely a new uh, stabilization fund, namely a capital stabilization.
Yeah.
And would the, the people who look at our money um, consider that as the same thing as our regular stabilization fund?
No, we're able to sort of differentiate it where we, we would essentially be putting it, the mechanism of stabilization fund. We're putting money aside for future projects. We're attempting to draw it down. Yeah.
Part of the reasoning behind this is that, you know, we have, hopefully we would have enough money to balance our budget. But we maybe the, one of the first things that starts loading out the door is, and not being able to do is the capital. It's, it's fixing or getting a new fire truck. It's all of those things that we really need. But they get pushed aside a little bit when you're doing your regular budget. You know, you've got that regular budget. And, and to use the extra money for your capital of, is, is a good way to do this. So that you sort of have this little bank account on the side so that you can get some of the, the capital um, project is done, even though it's a tough budget year.
Because when we delay certain capital projects, we're just kicking the can down the road. We don't do, as I always remind everyone, in this capital plan is an example of it, very few of our plans are, or our projects are something new or we're adding something, we're doing something fun. It's a lot of boring fixing stuff we have that's reached the end of its life cycle.
Isn't there a difference in terms of approvals of money coming out of stabilization fund versus um, free cash?
Yep, free cash requires just a simple majority, pulling money out of stabilization is two thirds and borrowing is two.
Oh, I thought free cash was a special amount of finance.
No, town meeting allocates free cash, simple majority. All right, other questions on the capital plan finances? All right, Frank, they're lying along. Article five, creation of affordable veterans housing at 20 Vernon Street. This project was um, originally on the warrant in May. It would allocate $800,000 from CPA funds to fund the creation of 20 affordable hu- uh, housing units for low income veterans on Vernon Street. I do have the uh, Chair of the CPC and CPC staff here who can also help answer any questions and may answer most of the questions as well. Um, Catherine or Joe, or do you want to say anything or do you want to just open up the questions?
Um, I think just quickly.
Yeah.
Do you want me, can I sit right here?
No, no.
Come on down. Um, I'll try and go as quickly as the town manager. I know, I sure will. Um, my name is Captain Walsh. I'm the interim chair of the CPC and I'm joined by Joe Sheehan, Joe Greeley, John Hall on the um, remotely, I don't know if anybody else is, and Kristen Phil, who is our uh, community preservation project manager. So I just.
Conservation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. I appreciate it. So just quickly, I wanted to give a background on what the CPC is all about and what funds are we are able to be allocated towards. So um, it was created by the Community Preservation Act. And um, the funds are specifically dedicated to open space and recreation, historic preservation and affordable housing. And so there's an annual surcharge on real estate taxes and some money that comes in through the state. And um, that's allocated to our budget and it's um, sitting in a separate funding bucket. And so I want to be clear that um, the CPC does not um, recommend any projects. Um, what we do is evaluate projects that are presented to us. There's a nine member board that evaluates the projects for um, eligibility requirements and viability. And so just by way of reference, we've received about um, 6.3 million dollars since inception in 2016 and we've spent um, a little over or close to $5 million. And so this year we're expecting to receive a little under a million dollars in revenue for projects that are being considered. Uh, next slide please. Um, so just um, just by way of background, um, I think uh, the town manager indicated we're looking at 20 studio apartments restricted to low income um, veterans. Um, the CPC is recommending that um, 600 of the 800 come from our unrestricted fund. And 200 come from the uh, community housing fund. So the full cost of the development is a little over 5.5 million. Be providing 800,000 of that. Um, one of the great things about this, our partnership with Caritas is they partnered with ClearPath. Who's going to be providing 24/7 wraparound services for the residents of this facility. And another important fact is all of these residences or these units will count to our affordable housing stock. So in general, we are getting 20 units for $800,000. So that equates to about $40,000 a unit. You compare that with the state inventory of affordable housing, the average cost is about 600,000. Next slide please. So um, one of the things that um, we realized is that this was a very complicated project. And there were numbers of boards and committees that were very interested in this. And so we went back to the drawing board. Um, we met with Caritas, we had a number of um, public meetings, they had um, meetings with CPC. We went on a site visitor, some of the community preservation committee folks went on a site visit. And um, I think it's also really important to note that Caritas is a totally reputable um, affordable housing partner here. They have over 30 um, uh, similar units in the metro Boston area. And so they are well versed at providing these types of services and running these types of facilities. Um, and again, there's no co- no um, doubt that this is a really complicated project. And um, I think what, what everyone decided to do is, is uh, form a multi-committee working group. It included members from the CPC, members from the finance committee, um, member of the board selectmen and offices of the town manager and the finance manager. And so um, I think there were a lot of takeaways from that committee, a lot of questions that were asked in our visit or meeting with the committees and our visit with a lot of the town committees. So if we can go to the next slide, oh, no, that's, I'm sorry. Um, so one of the things that came out of this and the FINCOM and Board of Selectmen were really illustrative about um, helping us figure out how we can move this forward and explain this information to all the town meeting members. Um, and so um, some of the things that were of concern to the um, people who had input is um, what, what um, what are the incremental operating costs that might be related to this and, and how is the financing structured? And then quite honestly, the value of the deed restriction. So um, one of the things that the FINCOM was particularly concerned about is, is what are the projections that are being afforded to the uh, town of Norwood? And what could potentially happen if for some reason the project didn't go forward? So I'd just like to talk about some of the benefits that are part of this project. So the grant agreement um, is basically a guarantee that CPC funds will not be distributed until the state funding is in place. And that if uh, their certificate of occupancy for the operation of the facility is not obtained within 36 months, there is a clawback provision. So Norwood can take back the money. Um, I should say that Caritas is um, is, is proving themselves out there. They're getting mortgages and construction loans. And so it's not like they don't have any skin in the game. Um, they want to get the certificate of occupancy as soon as they are, is possible. And get the facility up and running and obtaining um, funding related to that. There's also a standalone agreement, a security ins- interest that is comparable to a mortgage. And that talks about our rights and responsibilities and this document is filed at the registry. Um, and then thirdly, which I think is the most important, is we're obtaining a deed restriction on the property that will ensure that this property is only used for affordable housing in perpetuity. And so um, I think that's a really important feature. Um, the other thing I want to point out is, is those three agreements are available online. So we did not include that with the handout materials, but if you go on to um, town meeting um, website or the CPC, there's a link to those documents. So you can take a look at, at that. And then just another thing that I want to comment is, is we've worked with the VA. And um, they've indicated that they will make uh, a normal preference available for this project. Doesn't happen in all instances, but they um, have, are willing to give us that. So we think that that's really important.
Let me finish up and then we'll take questions.
Okay. Um, okay. Oh, the other thing, just in, um, um, other things that were asked were, there was some confusion about the appraisal. The appraisal has come in and that is also available and the value of that is 1.6 million. So um, we can go ahead and take a look at that online as well. I know that we were definitely waiting for that. Um, and so um, I did talk about the benefits. Um, I definitely want to talk about the expenses. We didn't have a bullet line in there, but there um, is anticipated that there will be um, small incremental operating costs. Um, I, at a meeting just recently, the finance manager indicated that the range of the incremental um, costs can be anywhere from 30,000 to 110,000. And what that's predicated on is the um, individual benefits of every resident at the facility. And so what I can tell you right now is that there is no house norwood veteran that receives the maximum amount of benefits. And that if we sort of extrapolate that forward, it's highly likely that we would be coming in on the lower side of it, like about 30, 50, 70, somewhere. But not upwards of the 110. And I also want to be clear that that will be offset by building permit fees. Um, and also um, Caritas, even though they're a nonprofit organization, will be paying the residential tax rate on that facility. So there is some offset there. And so just quickly about historically what we've been spending money, as you can see, 19 historic, 15 open space, three community housing. And of the three of those, two are memberships to an organization for 10,000 each. And so the only housing project we have done to date is on Manhattan Street where we did a window and siding repair. And so I just have to tell you that this is like probably the most significant housing project that Norwood would ever get. And so um, you know, we were excited about the opportunity um, to be able to provide support to this. Um, next slide. So just graphically represented, historically, we've only spent about 9% of all the funding available on housing projects. And if we go ahead and fund the whole Caritas amount to 800,000, we'll be at a 20, 23% number. So we are heavily skewed towards historic, open space and recreation. Uh, next. And um, if we're fortunate to be able to be successful at town meeting and allocate the 800,000. We just wanted to point out that we will still have reserves in the housing, um, housing, um, in the amount of 66. And in the unrestricted fund, we'll have about 2.1 million dollars. So that's it. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, we'll do one on, uh, one in person, then we'll jump on mine. Now Kevin, this person.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, well, let's do all.
One question would be what would be the difference between this veteran preference housing? And the one that's being operated by the housing authority at Washington Heights? I believe that's still technically a veteran preference housing authority. Second question is what happens in a time that we do not have veterans? Available? Does that fall back into low income housing? Or what? Those are my two questions.
Awesome. So. Do I take the second one? I'll take, I can take the first one. You, you have, um, Jefferson Drive? Yeah. So Jefferson Drive is family housing. So these are individual, um, they're like little studios. So you're, you're attracting a different type of veteran. We wouldn't put a single, the folks only here are going to be single. Jefferson Drive is family, two, three better homes.
And also Greg Richen is here from um, Caritas. He's the CFO and um, the real estate person. And so I think he can probably take the next question.
Sure.
Um, and also I know you, did you have some slides?
Yeah, I got a couple of slides up there.
Okay, awesome. I'm so sorry.
Oh, absolutely.
I just get going.
I think that was great. Um, hi everybody. Mine's Greg Richen. Thank you for your question. Um, I think the, the short answer uh, to the question is it would, it would always go to veterans. But they wouldn't necessarily uh, be from Norwood. So if we, if we have some, uh, say one veteran in Norwood. And then the rest of the veterans would be in the rest of the, the catchment area for the VA, which is the area of Boston and parts of the South Shore. Uh, so I think that answers your question, but let me know if it's messy.
No, I think he was more, what happens if there simply aren't enough veterans?
Oh, if there aren't enough veterans?
Yeah.
Um, that would be a wonderful problem uh, for us to have, but uh, you know, the, the we would, we would ultimately have to go back to the agency uh, that we work with, uh, to fund the project. And the housing authority uh, and change our tenant selection plan. If we succeed, if we successfully in the, in the state of Massachusetts completely fix all uh, all veterans homelessness, that would be a wonderful problem, but I don't see us getting there in the short term.
I have one more. Go ahead, Kevin, then we'll put it on my one.
Then what? Are these units or a couple of them going to be ADA accessible?
Yes, at least three of the units will be fully ADA accessible. There will be a handicap grant. Um, we think it's really important uh, particularly for a homeless veteran population uh, to, to accommodate uh, those, those needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ed online. Ed, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, just a question on the funding during the annual. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we allocated a million towards this project already. And now we're asking for over 100,000?
No, sorry, let me correct that. The original warrant article in May was for a million dollars. It was withdrawn and deferred to the fall. So this is not an additional 800,000 dollars. This is 800,000 dollars instead of that original article was a million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. That's what was confusing me. Um, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this project, so I've got no problem with that. I just wanted to clarify the money chain.
Sure. Uh, we'll go wherever we're here. Gene?
Good appra- uh, a question about the appraisal, 1.6 million. Is that appraisal of property as is? Is that appraisal of property as is? Or is that a property in its highest and best use?
I'll defer, if you're more aware of it, usually for a property, it's highest and best use. Every appraisal the town has ever done has always been highest and best used.
Is that what was done for this?
Yeah, that's normally what commercial property appraisal is.
I believe it has both. That one's in the document, the appraisal is available on the website.
Chris will get us the answer in one second. I don't, while they're looking up, I don't own an appraisal that generally isn't highest and best use, but appraisals are, somebody's opinion. We once got an appraisal while they're looking for that for a property that was several million dollars worth than the seller's appraisal, and they were, they did not like our number, and I, of course, liked our number. So I thought somebody was going to hit me across the table once, but our number was about half of what theirs was. Ours was probably a little too low and theirs was probably a little too high. Praised or assessed? Okay, because those are assessed and appraised value are different.
So the company was the group that did the appraisal, and they referenced both an as-is appraisal and a highest and best use. And then kind of, they have a whole value methodology description in there. Again, this is available online for a fixed review.
So 1.6 was highest and best use?
They have a reconciliation of values, income and sales comparison. So they've talked about the highest and best.
We can circle back, we can get, we'll just get your copy of the appraisal. Is it on the CPC website?
It is.
It's on the CPC. Okay, so it is there. There were a million, we'll go right here, Carol, and then I'll go Bob and Joe. Carol.
So the deed restriction is an affordable, it'll always be affordable. Is it also restricted to veterans?
So the deed restriction will be drafted by the state as an instrument. And so Sarah Dixon, who's a community planner, is encouraging for it to be a little bit more broad than just a veterans' housing in the event that something were to change in perpetuity versus just a strictly defined veterans' affordable housing. But I think that's yet to be determined.
You lobbing that up to Joe?
That's exactly the question I had. I think the spirit of this project presented to the town is to provide housing for low-income veterans. If that doesn't occur, it's just low income, it's a totally different project. And I think people need to be aware of it. When I looked at the grant agreement, it's not complete on the website. There's no reference to veterans in terms of the low-income portion of it. I'd like to see that, I'd at least like to see the draft of the grant agreement completed before Town Meeting, so we know what we're voting on. Will that occur?
I can just mention that historically, there's never been a grant agreement in place when CPC has come to Town Meeting. And so the finance committee have a lot of concerns about the grant agreement. And so I think we feel like we have a pretty big grant agreement.
Right now, the grant agreement is not complete. It doesn't specify veterans. It just says low income.
Yep. Is Sarah Dixon online? Because I think she could answer this. Sarah?
Sarah. Yes, I'm here. So yeah, the deed restriction itself is usually a standard form that, as Catherine said, the state helps us put together. That can be very specific in terms of how many units of affordable housing are provided, at what, you know, level income those units have to be open to for eligible households. And I believe it can be restricted to veterans, but ultimately, that's not something that we have. You know, we have not received approval for that yet. We're just not at that stage. It's not something that we can begin working on that deed restriction right now, just given the phase of the project. However, the grant agreement is quite specific. It obligates Caritas to provide the services that they represented in their application to the CPC. And there are a fair number of protections that offer the town in relation to providing that service, when they get the certificate of occupancy, expending the funds and all of that. So I would argue that the grant agreement is actually quite specific, ensuring that Caritas does what they've committed they will do with these funds. And, you know, it can't be executed before CPC award. That's, again, not conventional. But we've been with Town Council and with Caritas, and we feel that that grant agreement is substantially final.
Again, my issue is that I could see that this would go to low income and not be totally restricted to veterans. At least that door.
Leaves are open. Sure. I think the deed restriction would likely have to change. Is that correct? That's not a simple process. That's not simply you fill out a piece of paperwork. I think there's challenge there because you're right. In theory, if they're not able to get enough veterans, they would have to find somebody to fill the space because the restriction is still based on low income. Here's another scenario. Ten years from now, there's seven veterans in there. They're just not making enough money to cover the cost. Do they let other folks in, or do they close it and kick them out? You're not going to see, you know, hey, we put out an ad for veterans, come here. And then three weeks later, hey, we didn't get enough people, let's go. You're probably talking about a year-long process, at least in my estimation, to try to change that. I believe we, if it wasn't included in the final draft, there was a conversation that the grant agreement would include. They'd have to come back to the board of selectmen for permission to change that, as well as all of the other steps that they would have to do. But by no means is that simply a, eh, let's just change it and do it. You're talking about a lengthy, lengthy process.
I think if anything, we're not going to never have veterans. We might solve the veterans homelessness problem, but we're not going to be at a point in this country, I would highly imagine, where we never have veterans who aren't low income. That would be incredible, but I highly doubt it.
Point is, it's not restricted to veterans totally.
I believe it will be, and it's open, though.
What's that?
In terms of the selection process on the Caritas side.
The grant agreement is restricted to veterans.
But the deed restriction, what, I think?
The, it depends. I think the state will allow us to, but the funding sources will require that it's, that it's used to house veterans. So while the deed restriction might be, might have to be left open-ended, the actual funding sources in the project, which are governing documents, would still require veterans' housing. So I'm sorry if I misunderstood your question.
Can we request?
The deed restriction?
The deed restriction to be restricted to veterans. Can we request that?
Yeah.
I think that's up to the town as well.
Will we request that? It may have been advertised as Vernon Street Veterans Apartments. I just want to guarantee that the deed restriction restricts it to the veterans. Right now.
Yeah, if that's not, if that's not contemplated, then it certainly will be by the time the vote arrives. I mean, that is the entire intent of the project, is low-income veterans.
And the other aspect is the quality, what qualifies for low income. From what I was reading, it's about eighty percent of the median income of the town, of the town residents. Can that be brought down to like sixty percent? So we really do target the people with low income.
So I think it's no more than eighty percent. Am I correct?
No more than eighty percent.
Yeah, that's.
Highest priority would be the lower income.
I'll go to John Hall. Raise his hand, John. John, you're muted. You got off.
Now can you hear me?
We certainly can. Go right ahead, sir.
This is on the same issue that's been kicking around here. In the proposal from Caritas, there was a fair amount of analysis of the veteran-specific income sources that people who are applying for this property would have available to them under veteran benefits. If you imagine that for any reason at all, that there's an opportunity for someone who's not a veteran to apply for one of these affordable properties, it will be in all likelihood less affordable for them because they won't be able to add benefits from veterans' programs to their income base. So it's not the same thing as saying that that will be made impossible by the rules, and I understand that that will be done before the vote takes place. But it is a factor that's out there that makes it much less likely, I think, that anyone who is low-income and not a veteran would be tempted to apply for one of these properties because they couldn't make the numbers work.
Great, great point, John. Thank you. Michael, something to hand out. Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you. And one question. Kind of on this point, there's a lot of reference to the application, which I'm sure includes an exceptional amount of detail. The project in the grant application is defined by reference to the application. I know that the application is being exhibited to the grant agreement, but it's not in the linked documents under Town Meeting. I'm also not finding it under the CPA website. We maybe take the application and pluck that in with the rest of the Town Meeting materials? Because I think the detail in that might be helpful for review.
Absolutely. We'll get that up front first thing in the morning.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And then just a question. Could we just have a little bit more information about the discussion with the VA about the local preference? How that works, how it's documented? How, like, what's the enforcement action there?
Sure. Greg, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, we basically had a very high-level discussion with the VA where they gave us the okay via email to use a local preference. As far as the logistics of it and how that would work, they're always going to prioritize the chronically homeless, disabled veterans from any part of the catchment area. And then there will be the local preference sort of beneath that, is my understanding.
Thanks. I guess conceptually, that makes sense to me. I think it would just be helpful to have a little bit more information on how that's documented, other than a high-level email.
Sure.
Contemplated going somewhere.
Sure, we can, we can document it. This is Joe really, Rachel, we can document that. But one, one thing that came up during the discussion is that local preference is actually managed by the VA. So the, let's say a prospective resident applies for residency on twenty, at twenty Vernon. He or she would submit the application through the VA and through the filter, like the VA filtering process would go through their normal steps. But one of their steps in this, in the case of this property, would be to filter whether or not that individual had ties to Norwood, either lived in or worked in Norwood. And if that's the case, then those, those preference points, if you will, would be added to that application. So it's actually something that's monitored and managed by the VA in their normal sequence of events as far as matching up residents with this property. So we'll, we'll be sure to document it. But it's not, like, it's not something like that. Just to clarify, it's not in the town's hands to award that preference, nor is it in Caritas's hands to award that. It's strictly managed at the VA level.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I think Rachel's question, that probably mostly answered for more, is what documents the fact that that's going to be there? Other than just, we said we talked to the VA, I think whatever, if we can get something together on that would be. Am I correct, Rachel, that was sort of what you were?
Yeah, that would be so helpful, and I appreciate the context, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, Tony, I have a follow-up on that.
Go for it. Not a moderator.
Thank you. What agency actually chooses the individuals for the housing? I don't think it is actually the VA that makes that selection, right?
It's moderator. No, I'm sorry, I'm kidding.
It is, so the VA via the Boston Housing Authority.
So it's the Boston Housing.
Correct. Is there the regional housing authority for this particular municipality?
So the VA is an input into the decision, what the final decision is.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
Exactly. Thanks, sir.
Sarah, did you want to add something? Sarah, our planning director.
Yes, if you don't mind. So yeah, just to kind of reaffirm what Mike said there. The VA makes the referral. They perform the tenant selection. They send that referral for the individual to the Boston Housing Authority, who does serve as the administrator of the vouchers. But their role is less about tenant selection and more about verification.
Selection and more about verification.
And I can speak to that, having been on that side in a former life, working at the Boston Housing Authority on this program, that we weren't managing any wait lists for it. It was really just, you know, they send Sarah Dixon's name over to the housing authority, and the housing authority puts together the file for me, takes copies of my birth certificate and record of my service, and establishes my income and figures out what my rent is going to be. It's more of an administrative service. The VA is really ultimately.
Thank you. Income certification and proof of service, all that sort of stuff.
Other question, there were a couple of answers. Sorry, Mr. Joe.
I have a question on the amount of money, the total amount being spent on project.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Five point five million?
Oh, sorry.
Project value?
The total development cost. Yeah, so the five point five million is the total development cost, but there's also the acquisition cost of 1.6 million. So it's really just over seven point one million dollars. Thank you. And the majority of that would be funded by the state. We got, we were invited to apply for the pre-application to the GOHLC in the fall supportive housing round.
Henry?
You had mentioned a sum of money between thirty and a hundred thousand dollars. Is that yearly or is that a one-time?
No, it would be an annual contribution.
That's from the town?
Yes, yes, it's a local match.
So what we do?
On what the benefits are that each resident will receive.
Let me clarify what that is. The Commonwealth has what's known as a Chapter 115 Veterans Program. Every city and town in Massachusetts is obligated to provide assistance to veterans who are low-income. And the state actually reimburses a seventy-five percent of that cost. So based on what a veteran's income is, would determine what they're actually eligible for. The maximum amount, I think it was twenty-four thousand dollars per year, but that's if you pretty much have to have no income to be able to qualify for that. If you even have, you know, ten or twelve thousand dollars in social security, that number comes way down. So it is theoretically possible, if you were at the lowest end of the income scale, that it could be twenty-four thousand dollars a year, of which we get seventy-five percent of that back from the state. That being said, we do have some veterans' clients that get two hundred dollars a month, a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Some people don't even qualify for regular assistance. They would qualify for sort of one-time, there's different little pockets of money. So that's why that number is tough to predict. I think honestly, God, dollars out of our budget, thirty thousand dollars is probably closer to reality because it's rare that we have somebody, regardless of how low-income they are, that they qualify for that full annual twenty-four thousand dollar amount. It's exceedingly rare here and everywhere else. The state's veteran, local veterans program is unique to Massachusetts. It's a bit of an inequitable system because low-income veterans tend not to live in wealthier towns. If you're living off, you know, eight hundred dollars a month in SSDI or something, you're probably not owning a home in Weston or Wellesley or something like that. They tend to congregate in lower-cost and lower-income areas of the state, which just puts a further burden on those communities. But that's just me complaining about the program. It's not really relevant to this specifically. Carol?
Will that amount of money should be in the veterans' agents' line item?
Yeah, so that line in Teddy's budget, it would sense now Derek's budget is the new veterans' agent. Teddy's moved to sort of retired status. That number fluctuates based on just looking at the last couple of years. It's a, what I refer to as a commodity or an obligation. If five hundred veterans moved into town tomorrow and they qualified for it, we have to pay it. So the number will go up and down based on what that is. It doesn't mean like all of a sudden next year, and again, we're talking about after people have moved in and after they've applied for the services. You'll probably see that fibrulate up over time, but you're looking at a couple of budget cycles before it does. And that's absent any other changes. As I said, that number could double next year if it just happens to double. Right here in the back. Right here in the back.
I'm wondering why it sounds considered having the Northern Housing Authority run a project like this instead of a private company.
So I guess I can speak to that on behalf of the housing authority. I, they would have to go after the different sources of funding and be looking to expand their portfolio. They really have limited capacity and limited staff. Other than their maintenance workers, Sean has, Sean's the executive director of the housing authority. There's two or three employees for the whole housing authority and that's it. And they manage five hundred and fifty units, but they really don't, they get their funding from mostly the federal government passed through the state. So it would probably be challenging for them to start expanding and saying, okay, we're now gonna go after all these different millions of dollars and then we're gonna build this program and we're gonna manage that program. Probably administratively tough for them, for the same reason that the town with our current structure wouldn't do it. Some cities and towns do. We can never manage something like this individually in the town level. I just don't have the staff to deal with it and to do it. And the housing authority is very, very lean when it comes to their actual, their actual staff. And the housing authority. Yeah, it's housing. Why isn't the housing authority doing it?
Somebody else. And then I looked up the Carrados community executive structure. Now they spend, executives, they make three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And so like, who managed it, right? I know they're not profit, but.
I always find nine ninety's very interesting for what certain nonprofits pay. My guess is they just have the administrative structure to be able to do that. They all, how many units do you guys manage?
I have just under nine hundred units. And this is, you know, the reality is the most affordable housing is not run by housing authorities. It's run by private companies, not nonprofits like Carrados.
And I think one of the unique things about it that interests us is the wraparound services, right? So we've got case managers working and trying to optimize the amount of money that they get that reduces the amount of Norwood after contributing. And it's just a twenty-four seven operation. So they are a time act of the name director, hopefully he would be a veteran. And I know the model very well respected in affordable housing. And so I think that was another check in the box for the CPC members.
Great question. Other, yes.
Sorry, just to follow up on the housing authority. We did, the executive director, Sean Bynicle, was very much in favor of this. And I don't know if we've already received a letter of support, but Sean is writing a letter if he hasn't already. And the reason he's, obviously, one of the many reasons is in favor of this is because this provides, it fills a gap in the service, you know, provide, from being able to provide service specifically in this, in this flavor with the wraparound services. Because again, that's not something that the housing authority is set up to do. But we do have his, we, the CPC in this project, I'll say, this project has full support from the housing authority.
Henry, do you have another question?
I was just gonna say, one of the things that bothers me is that this thing has been so confusing and so poorly presented from the start. Just seems like, you know, for a company that does this for a living, then it should have been presented much better than it was. Just seems like there's been a lot of questions and stuff. This thing's been going on for a year.
Sure. One of the, one of the challenges I think we all face is this is our first, I think this is Norwood's first outside funding project.
It's not creative.
Correct, but for, not that I'm not blaming somebody else, I believe, I'd like to blame somebody else if I can. This is the CPC's first time in our, our first time with town meeting and the FinCom, the board going through a large outside funding process. I think we provided twenty-five grand to the Historic Society for something. So there's naturally gonna be some, some growing pains in looking at, looking at some of that. But point well taken. Other questions on this article? We can circle back at the end and Carritas is available as well. We have a couple more articles we would like to discuss. I'm not missing anyone online, am I?
Nope. Okay, we kind of went through a lot of this, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna bore everyone. I think we've all talked about this, but I know it's available if there's more questions. I mean, again, I've literally seen all your faces at least a couple times by now and you've probably seen mine. But we, we've talked about the sources of funding, which are up there right now.
Included in the materials as well.
Okay, this online as well.
Yeah, all this entire presentation included. I might actually leave a stack of cards up here too, just in case anyone wants to shoot me an email. I think, you know, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone at, either in this room right now or offline. I think the good news is we got through planning and zoning. So we are, we are fully entitled. We have a, we have a schematic design set. We've got a great efficiency studio unit concept for this veterans housing. And again, I'm happy to talk to anybody either now or in the future.
So, thank you, Greg. Moving on to the next article is Article Six, A Easement Near the Cokely Middle School. This is just a poll relocation where Verizon requires an easement anytime a poll gets moved. We will be looking to grant them the easement for the middle school project. Unfortunately, even though it's simple and it's a poll relocation, still has to go through town meeting. And I.
So is this for the new building or is this because of the?
There a real difference between?
It's because of the new building.
Okay.
The service to the building. Yeah.
The service.
Yeah.
Yeah, to continue the service.
Question online. Frank, go ahead, Frank.
Is Verizon delivering a service to the school that Norwood Light can't?
Is Verizon gonna bring a service to the school that Norwood Light can't? Alan, what service particularly are they bringing?
Yeah, I, again, I think it is, you know, internet service and, you know, there's, they're working, you know, Norwood White is also providing some service too, I believe, but I think it's primarily internet and maybe phone related services.
Yeah, the school's not gonna be utilizing Verizon, but they're still interconnected in our network throughout town. All right, thank you. Other questions on the easement?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Frank. Article Seven, Removing the Town Road Residency Restriction for Special Police Officers. Rachel, did you, was it the previous article?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. Just a little piggybacking off.
No worries, go ahead.
This, um, these are, this is for phone internet, but not cell phone, right? This is not for a town.
Cell phone, right? This is not for a town.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Verizon has terrible service in town, if you ask me, but that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss Article Seven, which is removing the normal residency restriction for special police officers. We do, several years ago, we received from the state the authority or the permission to allow police officers retired from Norwood who are over the age of sixty-five, but have not yet exceeded the age of seventy, to work details in town. At the time, we wrote it as just retired from Norwood Police. We would now like to amend that to allow it if they've retired from any police department in Massachusetts. We are struggling to fill details, partially based on construction, changes in lifestyles where younger officers sometimes aren't working details the way they otherwise were and just fewer available details for the level of construction that we have. So right now, if you're over sixty-five, you can only have worked in Norwood. We see no reason why somebody who worked in Westwood their whole career couldn't also do a detail between the age of sixty-five and seventy. We, details are always offered to our active officers first, then they go to our retirees. This is that next class, but we are starting to fill details on a regular basis. They're wonderful on a nice fall day, but when you see somebody out there in January, it's two degrees or July, when it's ninety-seven degrees out there, those all of a sudden are not, not the most desirable details. So this is just a simple change to prior legislation to allow that. Our Late Sales and Weights and Measures General Bylaw, we are required to engage in weighing certain scales and other weights and measures. Unfortunately, the fees that we collect for that are set by state law. And the only way to change that, and we haven't changed it in probably forty years since the state changed it, is to adopt a bylaw with the new fees. Primarily for, and we look at other ways of doing this, and unfortunately, time and time forward, if you are, that this is the only way to actually raise these fees for weights and measures. The full list is included. Candidly, the majority of the weights and measures that we deal with are gas stations and supermarkets. There's a fee in there for a milk jug if you have a cow. I don't remember the last time a cow was in Norwood. I don't know how one would get a cow to Norwood, come to think of it. Somebody brought that up earlier. We don't do very many of those, so I don't know what the revenue projection on those would be. It's mostly gas stations, grocery stores, delis, anywhere that you use a scale. We're just bringing these up to really the average for the whole county. We'll probably have to bring this back every five or ten years, make sure we're keeping up with that average. Questions on weights and measures?
I'm curious about what the, what the fees are now. How much is it going?
I think that's, yeah, I mean, some of them are going up substantially. I can raise them to the state, change the bylaw probably four years ago. So we're probably about thirty percent of the average of where Norfolk County is. So roughly every hundred dollar fee they have, we're at like twenty or thirty dollars. We're still charging them, charged forty years ago, candidly.
Thank you.
So just a funky fool's way, we have to do things sometimes. Does everyone know what our no work wise? Homework for town meeting. Article Nine is adopting a local option sales tax for the sale of recreational marijuana. This is also kind of a quirky one. The town of Norwood actually voted to not have recreational marijuana. The state legislature passed a law allowing medical marijuana dispensaries, of which there is one in Norwood, permitted before a certain date to convert to recreational marijuana. So the one that we have in town is allowed to convert to recreational marijuana. And because the medical one is going out of business, they're looking to convert to recreational marijuana. We cannot do anything about it. We've been told by council and that you're just, you're stuck dealing with it. There's not much you can do about it. However, every town that does have a recreational marijuana dispensary does have the local option sales tax, which we would want to adopt similar to our meals and hotel tax, since it's coming here anyway. Once it's all said and done, it'll probably be a couple hundred thousand dollars to the town, but they're not gonna be up and running till sometime in the spring or the fall. We wouldn't be booking this revenue for a couple of years. But if we're, we're stuck doing it, we might as well make sure we're getting a tax for it. Carol, then I'll go online.
I'm just wondering, the medical marijuana thing is closing?
They're going out of business, so they're going.
They didn't have enough business.
Correct. Yeah, Frank, go ahead.
Is the primary purpose of this to tack on tax evasion charges to people who are selling marijuana illegally?
I'm sorry, can you, sorry, say that again?
Is the primary purpose of this article to tack on tax evasion charges to people who are arrested for selling marijuana illegally?
No, I don't think it is, chief. Do you think you'd be able to get away with that?
We don't enforce tax regulations.
Okay, thanks.
I suppose you could call the IRS, I guess, if you can get through them. That's a great question. Other questions on the local option marijuana tax? Rachel, go ahead.
Thanks. Curious where the tax revenue of this would be applied. Does it go into a designated fund? Or to the general, like free cash? Where would it go?
Like free cash, where would it go?
No, so it's just all, all funds received by the town are general funds unless there's a specific law that otherwise states they go somewhere else. And this applies to that as well. So it just becomes regular revenue to the town. It will be listed under our local receipts, just like our meals tax and our hotels tax. That's not to say that in the year that we're able to book that revenue, we might not say, hey, if this is two hundred thousand dollars, do we want to increase compensated absences by that amount and fix it? We can do that, but it's not really going to that. It's all just revenue to the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Other questions on the, go ahead.
They have to be in the same location.
They do. Yep, they'll have to seek, it's kind of funny, they have to get, I think, either a variance or a special permit, but we have to give it to them. Not quite sure why that's the process. It's basically the state has said they are allowed to do this. We have to allow them to do it. They couldn't undergo something that's fundamentally inconsistent with the zoning, even though zoning says you can't do it. So they couldn't decide to just build a twenty-story building because they want to. And I don't believe they'd be allowed to move from that specific location on Route One, at least near Aster Ave. All right, good question. Other questions on medical marijuana, sorry, on the recreational marijuana surtax? Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's it. Nine articles. Prediction of four nights, I think we'll get done. I'm kidding. I think we'll be done in one. Thursday, the twenty-fourth, again, it's a little different, six thirty in the auditorium. I will stick around if anyone has any additional questions. And again, you can always email my office directly or any of our department directors. If you have any questions about any of the warrant articles, that is what we are here to do. With that, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, who joined us online. We appreciate it. For the first time, we had more folks online than in person. That has not happened yet. So thank you all for, for doing that and we'll get this reporting up and out to everyone. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. That has not happened yet. So thank you all for, for doing that. And we'll get this reporting up and out to everyone. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.